Okay.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Bureau of Top House for meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019, for ordering to 6:30 PM. Please stand for an occasion by Pastor Bob Hope, a Christian church. Please remain standing for pledge allegiance.
Our God, Father, we thank you for the opportunity tonight to watch this community in action. Father, thank you for this community and it's a place where families can grow and can raise their kids and families can come and find life and a new purpose. Father, we pray for the men and women in the room for their decisions have been made.
... Father, that you bless them with wisdom beyond what is theirs. We pray as well, Father, for those who serve and protect this community, that you would bless them with a sense of security and a sense of boldness as they continue to do what they have been equipped to do. So, Father, we thank you and look for your guidance tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Low call, Mr. Gurnsey.
Yes, sir.
Three, yeah? Minchuk?
Here.
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 Here. We have six present, we have a quorum, petitions, communications, and remonstrations. Large gathering permit, St. Savvas Church, Church fundraiser, staff report.
Event will be Friday and Saturday, August 2nd and 3rd, 2019, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and Sunday, August 4th, 2019, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Event is held to raise funds for the church. Approximately 1,000 people will be in attendance. The maximum amount of people allowed to assemble each day will be limited by the parking attendants and the Maryville Police Department, which will be on site. 700 raffle tickets are sold. There will be two porta potty facilities, there will be six male toilets and six female toilets available, which will be maintained by the St. Savva Church custodians. There will be four dumpsters, 25 trash containers on site, which will be maintained by waste management. 1,000 onsite parking spaces will be available and accessible from paved public street. No parking from surrounding property owners will be used. Entertainment will not be provided, entertainment will be provided by tambour, singers, the Serbian rock band. Security will be provided by off-duty Maryville Police Officer and an off-duty sheriff police officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve the large gathering permit for St. Savva's Church. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Next one is large gathering permit, Northwest Indiana Hindu Religious Center, Indian Culture Center, India Fest, Mrs. Shine.
The event will be held on Sunday, August 11th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. 400 to 500 is the maximum number of people permitted to assemble. Water and soft drinks will be available, and off-duty Maryville Police Officer will provide security. There will be adequate restroom dumpsters and parking on site.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve large gathering permit for Northwest Indiana Hindu Religious Center. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Large gathering permits, Salvadorian Fathers Marian pilgrimage. Mrs. Shine.
The event will be on Sunday, August 11th, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Approximately 5,000 people will be permitted to assemble. 39 male toilet facilities and 48 female toilet facilities will be available to use and will be maintained by Porter Portable Johns in Lockport, Indiana. Drinking fountains and water spigots will be available in the hall, church and picnic areas. There will be three dumpsters, 55 trash containers on site and will be maintained by Star Disposal of Indiana. Telephone service will be available inside the church and inside the hall. On-site parking will be available and will be accessible from paved parking streets. No parking from surrounding properties will be used. No overnight stays will be a part of the assembly and no entertainment will be supplied. The Maryville Police Officers will provide security and traffic control for the march. Directions and parking signs in Polish language will be posted.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron.
Second.
Second by Councilman Minchuk. Any discussion? This is the one where they come down 57th Avenue, down, what is it? Down Chase Street, through 57th Avenue and over to, over Broadway down to 57th, down to 58th Avenue. Chief, everything okay?
Good to go.
Okay.
They, they leave the Griffin Airport in the morning and takes about an hour and 45 minute march.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries 6 to 0. The proclamation, National Health Center Week 2019. Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative, preventive healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Whereas, as the country's largest primary care network, health centers are the healthcare home for 28 million Americans in over 11,000 communities across the nation. One in every 12 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. Whereas, health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban communities, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, health centers serve one in every five residents of rural areas. Whereas, every day, health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services, to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Whereas, health centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring that the patients of each health center are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Whereas, health centers are locally owned and operated, small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating $54.6 billion in economic activity in some of the country's most economically deprived communities. Whereas, health center nationally employ more than 220,000 people, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and certified nurse midwives, who work as part of the multidisciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. Whereas, the health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance statute, improving healthcare outcomes, and reducing healthcare systems cost. Whereas, health centers reduce overall cost of care by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, which keeps them out of costlier healthcare settings like hospitals and emergency rooms. Whereas, health centers are the front lines of emerging healthcare crisis, providing access to, to care for all nations' veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Whereas, National Health Center Week offers an opportunity to celebrate America's over 1,400 health center organizations with over 11,000 service delivery sites, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all of those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health center opened their doors more than 50 years ago. Whereas, during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's health centers and their, their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare. Now, therefore, the Town of Maryville Town Council does hereby proclaim, August the 4th through the 10th, 2019, as National Health Center Week. I encourage all Americans to take part in this, in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve. That's it.
You need a breath?
Need some water?
I'm good. I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we acknowledge National Healthcare Week, August 4th through the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to ask Amy to come forward and receive this plaque. Consent agenda, council payable register voucher, voucher for approval for July 23rd, along with town council meeting minutes from July 9th. That's what happened.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees. Budget and Finance, Councilwoman Baron.
We have another budget and finance meeting scheduled for August 20th at 5:00 PM.
That's all you got?
Uh-huh.
Is that all you have?
That's to discuss the, um...
The 2020 budget.
Yeah, the 2020 budget, sorry.
Oh, okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilman Minchuk.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
Uh, yes, I would like to announce that the Town Council and I would like to show our appreciation to all the town employees by making Sunday, August 18th, Town of Maryville Employee Appreciation Day. For all that they've done for us, we would like to thank them by inviting the all employees and their immediate family members to Deep River Water Park, August 18th, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. This invite goes out to all town employees, police, police department employees, fire, fire department employees, and their immediate family members. And we hope to see you there. Thanks.
You need a motion? Okay.
That's all you have?
Mm-hmm.
Personnel policy play, Ben Fitz, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, obviously with a heavy heart, uh, tonight is Bruce Spire's last town council meeting. Bruce has served the town in so many capacities, so much, so many fashions, and over the years, uh, you've become a good friend.
Thank you. You have too. I made a lot of great friends here.
Uh, with that being said, Mr. President, we are going to have a farewell lunch for you. And you're picking up the tab. Uh, everyone's invited, July 31st, from 11:00 to 2:00, here in the council chambers, uh, to say goodbye to Bruce and wish him his best in Indianapolis and remind him where his roots are.
Thank you. Good luck to you, Bruce. Thank you.
Good luck. What time is lunch, Sean?
11:00.
11:00 AM on the dot?
There's a flyer in your envelope or your folder.
All right, Sean, I see it.
And also, Mr. President, I would be remiss if I did not welcome onboard our new town manager, Patrick Ruden, who started yesterday and is already hitting the ground running. So, welcome aboard, Pat.
Thank you. Welcome.
Uh, Public Safety, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
Uh, no report now.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
Um, I do not have anything, but Jan does, I'm sure.
I do. I had a pre-construction meeting with the Public Works Department and Sinclair Recreation. We have started the construction of Savannah Ridge Playground. It will take approximately three to four weeks to install the playground, and then it will, uh, be up and running. A second thing I have is Friday, July 26th, we have our Concert Under the Stars. It's from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. It includes solid players together in Latin satan soul. We have four Maryville Police that'll be on hand for us that evening. We've designated Prusen Park as our handicap parking lot. Uh, we also have three donated golf carts from Turkey Creek, where we will transport handicapped individuals from the lot to the park and back again. Uh, we have a two-yard roll-off load for the concert. Uh, we have ordered the light tower supplied by the Fire Department, uh, for that evening. And we also have a Christian revival parking lot, they're allowing us to use that, and St. Peter and Paul parking lot. Our vendor came in and supplied us with his liability certificate. He's all set to go. Uh, stage will, uh, start being constructed on Thursday, and we'll finish that on Friday, and sound will come in on Friday. On Saturday, July 27th, we have our First Gospel Fest from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Same thing Saturday.
I thought it was four, one to four.
Well, we might run a little late, so I just set five, just in case. Same thing, we're going to designate Prusen Park as a handicap lot. Um, however, due to a, um, outing over at Turkey Creek, I'm unable to have the golf carts that day. Um, so we'll help people in any way that we can as a park crew to help them into the concert venue. Um, we have the performance lineup, and we have emcees for the concert, and a lot of people are looking forward to that First Annual Gospel Fest. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Jan?
No, I have a comment on the...
Go ahead.
Uh, Rosenbaum Park, Jan called me last week, the beginning of the week. She had put up, or had put up, the second swing, second or third swing. Somebody with an electric saw, in the nighttime, I'm assuming, is cutting down those swings. So, Jan is not going to put up another one. It's Rosenbaum Park off of 73rd and Taney Place, and we are watching it. I have been driving by. So, whoever is doing it, I'm sure it's an older juvenile, they do not realize that that is taxpayer money. So, I'm asking the chief to please put someone on patrol out there different hours of the evening, because that's when we think it's been done.
No problem.
Good.
Just so you know, it's not that I don't want to put a swing up, but we have spent over $635 in swings that have been vandalized.
In that park.
And just in that park.
And Jan has a picture of it on her phone, if you would show it to the chief?
I do.
Okay, good. So, that's where we're at with the one park. All the other parks are fine, all the equipment is in order, and the kids are enjoying the three other parks in Word 4. I know, and that's what we think.
Just, just keep the bills in order, because eventually they'll catch it.
Eventually, right.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, Jan?
No, sir.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Uh, Elections and Public Relations, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
No report on this.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Utility liaison, does anybody have anything on the utility liaison? Abandoned properties, no report. That concludes committee reports. General orders, we have no first reading ordinances, no second reading ordinances, resolutions. A resolution 19-25, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the extension of current temporary loans to December 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Pettit, that we approve Resolution 19-25. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 19-26, resolution of the Town Council of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the Engineer Fund.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve Resolution 18-26. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 19-27, resolution of Town Council of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the General Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Minchuk, that we approve Resolution 19-27. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6 to 0. Resolution 19-28, a resolution of the Town Council of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of 2019 budget within the CCI Fund.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve Resolution 19-28. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 6 to 0. That concludes resolutions. Uh, there's no BGA action. Thank you. Is there any old business? Any new business?
Uh, Mr. President, it kind of falls under announcements. I had told Sheila to move the Plan Commission Workshop to Wednesday, the 7th. Do we have a night out event planned, Chief? Has anyone talked to you about Tuesday, the 6th?
Richard Hardaway has one up his ward at the party.
I have one.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been having one down.
Well, you've had yours for a while. I didn't know we were having anything here at Town Hall or not.
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay.
Percy, where, where you have one?
I'm having it in Sedona.
Okay. Just let me know location.
I will.
Right in the guy's...
Well, I think we're doing 84th Avenue.
Oh.
We're blocking off.
So, what are you looking to do, Mr. Pettit?
Uh, Sheila, you already notified people to come Wednesday night? Should I just leave it at Wednesday night?
I, I advertise for Wednesday.
You advertise for Wednesday night, we'll leave it at Wednesday night then. I didn't know, I didn't hear any...
I know.
Yeah.
I know.
Well, I mean, I advertise for the, excuse me, I'm sorry. I advertise for the, uh, for, for the 20th.
The 20th, the public hearings?
Public hearings.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, you could move it.
Okay.
Because it says a study session, so...
Right.
What are you gonna do?
Let's, let's go ahead and move it back to the 6th.
Is that it?
Yep.
That's the workshop?
Workshop, 6:30 on the 6th.
What are you saying, Chief?
What's the time on the night out parties?
Mine's probably gonna be from 6 to 8.
Okay. Might be 6 to 8.
You're gonna get with me in case you need...
I, I'll get with you, because one of the things that we're gonna do, in fact, mine's gonna be lower than 6 to 8, because when the sun, I got a guy that's gonna show a movie in the park. So, at that time, we're gonna have, we've got a live, a live band coming from 6 to 8, and then we're gonna have, we're gonna have like a movie night at when the sun goes down. So, I'll let you know. I'll get you the particulars.
I'll call you, because I'm gonna need tables.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment, I ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comments? Any public comments? Please come up, state your name and your address, ma'am, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Michelle Haywood, this is my husband Roosevelt Haywood. We stay in the Broadfield subdivision. We recently got, uh, a letter talking about the new apartment buildings that's gonna go up. You familiar with?
Yes, we are, ma'am. I'm your councilman.
Okay. And so, I have some concerns, uh, about, uh, the plan to build those apartments. And I wanted to come here and speak on, uh, for me and my husband, my husband and I, uh, because it seems like it's gonna be a lot of people in the community, new people. In addition to that, then, uh, there's 275 units, if I'm correct. And basic, maybe we're gonna have 550 people, because some people come as couples. And so, I also saw something in a letter saying that there were gonna be 275 new cars in the community. Well, me and my husband have a car piece. And so, I'm concerned about things like that. I'm concerned also about who's gonna be living in those apartments, if it's gonna be income-based or people gonna have to have employment, uh, how are they gonna be going through a, like, a criminal background check and those kind of things. And those are things that I don't have information on, my husband doesn't, and I'm sure some of my neighbors don't. And so, those are things that I'm concerned about, and I imagine it's gonna be some other meetings in reference to it, so that we can have a clearer understanding and maybe have a voice expressing, I guess, my opposition to those apartments being out there in that community. We already have Mallard Bay, that's on 93rd. We have Honey, uh, uh, that Huntington Cove over on Mississippi Street, and now we're gonna have three other apartment buildings that's, you know, gonna bring in an extra, possibly, 500 people. So, that's what I wanted to talk about.
Okay, I tell you what, ma'am, if you...
Party meetings, I knew that.
If you, yeah, if you'd like...
Have been to a meeting.
If you'd like, I'll talk to you and your husband after, because Councilwoman Yuzelak is correct, we've already passed that ordinance. That, that apartment development has gone through. I will give you detailed... Are you in the new section? Are you on Carolina Court?
I'm on 92nd Place. I'm not over on the new side.
You're not in the new thing, so, but you're not a member of the Homeowners Association, then?
We are.
Then you would've gotten a call from Bill Berry or Gene Shiatovich.
I got a letter.
I've had two...
And that's the letter that I'm, uh...
I've had two meetings. Well, Bill called me tonight and said there's a letter going around the neighborhood that's trying to stir things up. This has been approved already.
But, uh, it hasn't been built yet, right?
It has not been built yet, no.
But it will be, and I had a woman, two women called me last week in your area, asking about the meeting and if they could come, and I've told them what Sean has just said. We've had the meetings, we've approved it with the contractor, the developer, and the lawyer, and they explained everything to the homeowners that were here. So, I did not understand what kind of letter they were getting, no.
Yeah.
So, um, okay. So, two, you felt that two meetings are sufficient for, uh, how many people live in the subdivision?
There's probably over, uh, easily 300 people, at least, and I will tell you, ma'am, that is my, one of my strongest neighborhoods, and I've always stood by the Broadfield guys. I've worked very closely with Bill Berryer and Gene Shiatovich the 16 years I've been in office.
I, I believe all of that.
The developer is gonna sink $450,000 into expanding the retention ponds to help the drainage with you folks. We wouldn't have been able to do that if this gentleman had not stepped up. But again, let me, so we don't take up too much, stick around, and you and I can talk, and I'll give you my phone number.
All right. Sean, I think we had more than two meetings on that project, yes. Plus a workshop.
Any other? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name and your address, ma'am.
Yes, Dorothy Smith, and I live on 9120 Georgia Street with my husband. Oh, sorry.
Up in that Perry, uh, at 918 Georgia Street, we're neighbors.
We've only been here for one meeting that we knew of, and that was last year with the developer.
Yeah.
We never heard nothing else about it.
Do you belong to your homeowners?
Okay.
Yes, 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 we pay our fees.
Okay, here. Let me, let, folks, let me, like I told the other lady, I'll be more than happy to meet with you guys after the meeting, and I'll go through every single detail, believe me, I know this extremely intimately. Um, let me, let me do that, so we can allow other public to, we can, I can go through that with you.
Okay.
Okay? And I'd like to see the letter that's going around the neighborhood.
We all got our letter.
Got it? Okay. Oh, yeah, I'll give it back to you when we meet after the meeting. Just give us the time to get through the public comment.
Well, thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Announcements. Order zoning appeals will be tomorrow night, July 24th, at 6:30 PM. Stormwater Management Board will meet August the 6th at 3:00 PM. The Plan Commission Workshop is August the 6th at 6:30. Next town council meeting is August the 13th at 6:30. And National Night Out at two locations, one in Sedona Subdivision and one up north in the, uh, Meadowland Park at, starts at 6 o'clock. Those two, uh, those are National Night Out events. Anybody that wants to attend either one of them is welcome to attend them. Any other business for the good of the group?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're done. Thank you.